Okay, I have to call a public hearing on the proposed local law of 2021 conference centers. Being held on May 11th, 2021 via teleconferencing using Zoom with a YouTube livestream to the public. This is due to COVID-19 emergency state and federal bans on large meetings or gatherings. And pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive order 202.1 issued on March 12th, 2020, suspending the open meetings law. Okay, audience participation is allowed. That's why it's called a public hearing. Zoom codes were already published so people can get in. No pledge, no flag. We gotta do a roll call to just verify we have a proper quorum. Supervisor Oberly here, Councilwoman Cunningham.
Yeah.
Councilman Giuliano.
Here.
Dean Michael.
Here.
Councilman Witten.
Here.
Town Clerk Mackin.
Here.
We do have a quorum. The town clerk will read the public notice.
Please take notice that the town of Clinton will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021 via Zoom video conference. Consistent with executive orders 202.1 and 202.15 as. Please take further notice due to public health concerns, in-person attendance will not be permitted. The public is invited to attend the public hearing held via Zoom video conference and comment on the proposed local law. Members of the public who wish to comment at the public hearing will be able to do so by joining the meeting via Zoom electronically or by telephone. The passcodes will be published by noon on May 10th, 2021, which will enable the public to participate. The codes can also be retrieved by emailing town clerk on May 10th, 2021 until 3:00 PM on May 11th, 2021. Comments for the public hearing can be submitted in advance of the public hearing by sending an email to the town clerk. At townclerk@townofclinton.com. The local law will take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. Complete copies of the proposed local law are available at the town clerk's office and on the website for inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on the said proposal at the date, time, and place aforesaid. All done.
Okay, at this time I'll open the floor via Zoom for comments and turn the meeting over to Councilman Michael. If you have comments, please identify yourself so we know who you are for a minute and don't forget to unmute yourself. Eric.
Sorry, I didn't realize that I could do it. I thought I was waiting for y'all to unmute me. Hello, everyone. Nice to make your acquaintance. I guess this is how we meet on these strange times. I'm Eric, one of the team members of the Duchess. Grew up in the area. I was at one of the town hall meetings a couple of years ago when you guys were doing them in person. And I just like to say, I appreciate all the work that you've been doing on the laws and to get everything sort of like, you know, in line and clear and. Yeah, I understand that. It must be a lot of work. Um, yeah, so I sent through my comments earlier. I'm not sure if that you reviewed him or not, but I caught up with Jeff for quite a bit of time right before this call. And he kind of cleared up the first question that I had sent through and that was just assuming that the definition of event is the same in this conference center laws. It would be in the Ag Dev Law, just to sort of help, you know, read the law and make sure that I'm understanding everything correctly. He said that the way the law is written, that that would be the case. I'm not sure if you guys can comment backwards or confirm that.
The whole intent of updating the conference center law was because of the event law and trying to make parity between the language. And then also kind of defining really more what the conference is and how it's different than the Ag Event Law.
Okay, fantastic. I mean, yeah, that's what like we're looking for is just to have kind of it in line with the agriculture events law. And then, I mean, my main actually concern for my for the team and for myself is really the safety of this, the outdoor event language. That was deviated between the two laws. And, you know, I mean, the pandemic is still a real threat, like the team's been inside, you know, operating safely, we're mostly vaccinated now, like, which is definitely a lot of peace of mind. Um, but seeing that the wording in the conference center law just basically says, no outdoor events shall occur at the site of the conference center. Was just really concerning for me because, you know, the team wants to be outside, we kind of need to be outside, you know, a matter of public safety to be doing as much as possible. Outdoors and that was definitely the plan coming into the nicer weather. So just curious if this was. Is there was any reason why this this was different or if we can just kind of like keep it in line with the Ag and Markets Law and just, you know, kind of copy over the. The Ag and Market Section D18 on outdoor events that just basically says outdoor events shall be contained within the event area and determined by the planning board. And specified on approval of site.
The biggest, the biggest concern and both with the the Ag events as well as the the Conference Center where agricultural events. Potentially could be outside because of farming activities, you know, with cows and horses and stuff like that livestock. Versus a conference center, which is typically within a confines of a building. As people would think about what a conference center is. So I think there's a difference between the two. But even with the Ag events, the most of our complaints come from noise and obviously we do have a noise ordinance, but. Most of it comes from the concern of noise and so to then allow for another venue to have outside events. Really becomes alarming. I didn't write this particular part. The the town attorney did. So, but I think that's really where we were standing on that. I mean, again, you know, if it's outside and it's quiet, I mean, I don't think, you know, anybody's going to complain. So that's really where the where most violations come from is a complaint.
And we definitely understand the noise ordinance and the noise ordinance is in the conference center law too, and we're definitely comply by that and always would. So I don't, I don't see why the outdoor event, it would say we could be no if we're complying with noise ordinance. I mean, for example, we even hold yoga outdoors, like to the extent like it's just safer for everyone involved in terms of our instructors, our staff, the guests. You know, we have a pavilion, that's where we hold a lot of the meals, like we just as a normal course of business, hold a lot of stuff outside on our 250 acres. And of course, we're fine to comply with all the noise ordinance and anything else in the law, but I don't. It's just a matter of safety for myself and for the team in terms of having this wording in there is how I feel.
The question that brings up for me is, do you qualify as an agricultural event center and a conference center and can you do both?
So I did have another question about that in the law and under the definition of conference center in section one. It says, any establishment located on a farm is governed by provisions of 250451, which is the Ag Market Law. So I wasn't sure if that was sort of your guys' way of saying, if you're a conference center, but you're on a farm like the Duchess is. Should we just be following the Ag and Market Law from now? In that line.
Well, yeah, I mean, it says any establishment located on a farm is governed by provisions 250-45.1 and shall not be treated as a conference center. The only difference is the fact that you currently have. A prior approval. That kind of gives you some grandfathering to towards your your conference center. Now, originally, the thought was that you guys were going to change to an Ag Event Center.
Yeah, I mean, we're definitely still open for that and we would definitely be pursuing that as well. I'm just kind of curious about like how. If we're following that that law anyway, based on our current designation.
Well, my, my, my one question or maybe a comment regarding that, I guess, because you guys kind of can go both ways. But you also have beds there. So you have people staying on over, right? So how, Dean, as far as that goes with the Ag Law. You know, it's really not about having, you know, the conference center gives the right for them to have. Beds or have people on the property staying on the property. And so I guess it's they're kind of like a mixed, they're they're in a certain, you know, the kind of like a kind of merge of a little of both. And their particular, because they have the farming as well as the conference center that they already have.
Yeah, it's definitely an anomaly.
I don't want to jump in if it's still Eric's time with the typical way public hearings go and it's one at a time. And don't, you know, really want to turn it into a discussion. At the same time, I realized there was there was very few of us, so maybe we can do a little bit of that. So there was a couple of things that 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 struck me about it. There's certainly the safety aspect of doing outdoors. But in part because the event definition is going into section 105, therefore that definition applies to any time the word event appears in the town laws. That definition, I had it pulled up here, but I lost it, but it includes outdoor activities. It within the definition of event. Within the existing conference center law, it allows for a golf course. Which would be an outdoor activity, which by the definition of event would be an outdoor event. So that in itself contradicts the law. Same thing with horses are allowed at a conference center specifically mentioned. Also outdoor activities, therefore by the law, the definition of event, it creates a discrepancy. So it's an odd limitation and I understand that to allow for potentially two larger. Two types of larger venues to host outdoor activities has the potential to create a greater volume of noise complaints. The noise ordinance is still in place and it still applies whether you're a two acre property or 300 acre property, whether you're doing a wedding for your daughter. Or you're doing an event on a conference center, it still applies. So it seems very, very difficult to enforce and it it seems unreasonable to expect. Personally, I think that.
So Jeff, if we match the 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 Ag Event Law to the the. Or we took the language from the Ag Event and put the same thing for outdoors in the conference center, you would feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, I totally agree with restricting it to whatever the event area is. And one of the things that was added into this this conference center law is the notification of events over 50. And so it could easily be included in that notification. Here's our 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 site map and this is the event area here. Now we know that all outdoor activities are going to occur within that area. So you don't end up with, you know, somebody on the edge of their property, you know, putting the wedding tent there and doing that kind of thing. I think it's more reasonable approach if that's possible.
Okay.
The other thing that I had. Under the definition of conference center and and again, I understand the overlapping and the potential overlap between agricultural event venue and conference center. And the primary difference of definition seems to be farming. But. One of the things that we are most excited about with this property is being able to do agricultural conferences. A farm operation that's looking to do events to help supplement their farm operation revenue. Is going to be doing the occasional wedding, the occasional family reunion, smaller events that are marketing their farm products. That's what Ag and Markets Law 305 supports. But a facility like us that has the infrastructure to develop actual conferences and has a small four acre currently farm. Where we can produce the crops and horses and we will eventually be inducing other livestock. We can actually use those as test agriculture, right? So we could have a conference where we're bringing people in who are looking to improve farming practices to become more sustainable, for example. And we can have a plot of a part of our farm where we can actually demonstrate that as a part of this conference. And and the way that this is currently worded, we wouldn't be able to do that. From a New York State perspective, Ag and Marcus perspective. New York State is a right to farm state, which means that anybody has the right to farm. And this effectively takes that right away from a conference center. So thinking outside of the Duchess as a property, someone else decides they want to do a conference center. And then through the part of the conference center like, hey, wouldn't it be cool if we could have a small farm? This wouldn't allow for that. And I think that, and this may be a question for Shane, but I think that works against the intent of the New York State's Ag Markets Law.
So then. Well, I mean, I'm going to answer my own question, but it seems that you should really be more of an Ag Event. Center and then we have to deal with the lodging issue.
Well, in the Ag and Ag Events Law, it does allow for lodging and an agricultural then under that law. It has almost the same paragraph as what the conference center says.
And it's been a while, but I thought that was really the lodging was specifically for the. Just for the the people involved in the in the operation, not not for guests.
Yeah, it's funny, you know, this is me being old, looking at the computer, but I had it up on my screen a while ago for the meeting and of course now I can't find it. But. I can get there real quick.
I have it. It says lodging shall not contain a kitchen facility and lodging facility shall be used of attendees at events, vendors or employees.
Right, so it still applies to the guests of the event itself. The idea was to limit it so it's not open to the public, but it's not a hotel. Right. But to your, to your, to your question, Dean. This may be a subtle difference, but there's a difference between a farm that is doing events and a conference center that is doing agriculture. You know, again, like I said, if you've got, if you're building these conferences, because that's your business and that allows you to do. Innovative farming, because you're not relying on farming for your income. It allows for a broader diversity of offerings for for conferences and seminars, right? We had, and some of this came from somebody who looked at the property a couple of years ago. And they had a vision of creating exactly that here where all of the conferences would become agricultural based. And that this property in Clinton, in the heart of the Hudson Valley would become this. Point of 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 education for taking farming from the old practices of the seventies, which are not sustainable. To the new practices that are coming next, that are not only more sustainable, also more profitable. That's a conference center offering agricultural activities. So like I said, it might be a subtle difference, but I think to to flat out eliminate that. Both works against Ag and Markets Law and takes away the opportunity for a conference center to be able to farm.
So to which part did was removed that you're referencing?
In the in the definition of conference center, it was the addition of any establishment located on a farm is governed by the provisions and shall not be treated as a conference center. So ideally, if that whole sentence could go away and 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 leave it up to. Maybe it's a question for the planning board, right? Maybe through application, the planning board makes the determination based on the narrative and the site plan. Hey, you guys really, in this application, you're an agricultural events venue, so you should present that, right? When they go through the sketch meeting. But then somebody else might be presenting it as a conference center and in their annual review might say, hey, we want to add farming next year and this is what we're thinking of. They would still be allowed to do that and the planning board can make that determination.
Okay.
Thank you. The. The other one, this was a housekeeping thing. On page two, number two, hours of operation. It says, I think that that the idea was to have longer hours on the weekend, but the way it's currently worded, you'd only be able to do it for two hours on Friday and Saturday. It says 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, but I think we want 12:00 AM.
You got us, Jeff, you got us.
But I think that was the only one. That's pretty good. We already talked about number eight. If that could go away, that would be, I think, huge. Oh, the other thing in number eight, and if eight goes away altogether, then this becomes a moot point, but it mentions specifically tents. And there are times that we might do an outdoor conference that relies on outdoor dining and the tent has to be erected in case of inclement weather. Or as we explore more outdoor ways to be compliant with any kind of COVID restrictions that still exist or that might come up in the future. We might put a pop-up tent up to do outdoor check-in. The gazebo, we already have a gazebo on site. Obviously, it wouldn't make us tear it down, but as Eric mentioned, it provides for outdoor dining, which not only creates a broader offering from a business standpoint. But it also helps be compliant with safety concerns. But again, if eight goes away altogether, then those are those are moot.
It says unless otherwise approved by the planning board, so.
Right, yeah, thanks, Dean, that's true. I did realize I wanted to read it. That does does not inherently apply to the second sentence. So the outdoor events could be approved by the planning board. Let me, let me spend a second of that in my head.
I mean, I understand what you're saying and I'll ask Shane to make that more clear that.
Okay.
You know, that if it was approved by the planning board, that that would be an exception.
Yeah, so.
If he doesn't want to remove the sentence entirely.
Right, yeah, if we can't get rid of eight, then potentially wording it as. Outdoor events, including the use of tents, gazebos, or other non-enclosed structures at the site of the conference centers, requires approval by the planning board. Something like that. That way the planning board again has the the authority to make that.
I would also say the building inspector as well, because obviously any structure.
Exactly right, including including the tents. And also again, because of the application to golf courses, horse operations and swimming pools. Which are also allowed at the conference center. And. I think that was it, unless you want me to make up some more.
No, I don't.
Yes. So, but but thank you. Again, I know, I know that this has been going on for a little while and we're all really excited for the end.
Well, Duchess County Planning had made some comments and I hadn't had a chance to read it, so. Obviously, I think that what we should probably do is leave the public hearing open until next month when we can have it fixed, corrected. And and then maybe I'll vote on it at that point.
Okay, that would be great.
Dean, if I could offer, if you are sure of the changes you want to make, you can close the public hearing, make those changes and then. Not have to have another one.
If I was writing the changes right now myself, then I would know what they are, but I'm really not sure, Carol, so.
Okay.
That's why I'm suggesting I leave it open.
I I also noticed that this is entirely replacing subsection 250-45. Does that mean the intention is to eliminate dude ranches altogether?
That was actually a comment, Dean, I know you didn't read that, but I was reading the Shelby's thing, that was one of the comments about was taking that out as the dude ranch.
Yeah.
Duchess County Planning pointed that out.
Right, and and that concerns me partly because. The nature of the dude ranch, it's a funny term, I get it, and every time I mention it to 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 people, they're like, what? But there is an inherent rural nature to the town of Clinton. And to allow for a property to create an experience around. That. Type of environment seems to really fit with that rural nature of the town.
Start talking dude ranch, I think you start thinking about like rocking horse ranch. Where that's more of a, you know, kind of like an event place, hotel, dude ranch.
Yeah, and I totally agree with that. And I think that in our early discussions with the with the Ag Events Law, we spent a lot of time kind of going around that, like. What's the difference between a bed and breakfast, a dude ranch, a hotel and and all those sort of scenarios? So it just, it struck me when I read it that it was missing and I wasn't sure if that was intentional or if there would be a different classification written up for dude ranches. Or if the plan is for just to go away altogether. I was gonna say, Dean, I imagine you already have that ongoing.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, sure. So 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 that is the, was Duchess County Planning's comment because they wanted that in or they just made a comment, they were surprised and they wanted it out?
They noticed that the new definition would eliminate it. And so in our schedule of use regulations, dude ranches should be eliminated.
Yeah, yeah. So 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 there that was just a housekeeping comment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, obviously, there are some other things that that need to be updated in our schedule of use, but.
Right.
Again, that's also ongoing with our zoning revision, that there's a bunch of things that would change as far as both the schedule of use and the definitions.
That makes sense. Okay, well, I'm sorry, that's probably, but that's probably all I have, unless you want me to go on.
No.
I mean, just going, just going back to my original point, my only concern is sort of this no outdoor event line in number eight. Like even my approval of the townie board, we're going to have aspects that are outside of every every single seminar event.
Well, I do see the conflict in a sense that it does allow for, like Jeff was mentioning, the golf and the and the horseback riding and those type of things. So those are outside events, so it is kind of. It's definitely contradictory to the whole use of the property. So I'll talk to Shane about it and see what we come up with.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, sort of a thought on that. Part of the intent when when we've been working on this was to help maintain the larger properties in the town. And so that people could have a means of generating revenue. Because those large properties and those open spaces are important. And if the enjoyment of those outdoor spaces is taken away, then we're sort of missing that big chunk of the point.
I understand.
Thank you very much.
Any more, any more comments? Okay, there being no further comments, I make a motion. Lead the public hearing open until June 8th. That's our next town board meeting. Is there a second?
And we want to do it at 6:25 again?
Yes.
At 6:25. Okay, any further comments?
Second.
Second, okay, ready to vote? Oberly, I, Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next one is adjournment for the public hearing. I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Roll call, Oberly, I, Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. This part of the public hearing is done and we'll enter in next to the regular town board meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You ready, Fred?
All set, all set.
I call the regular town board meeting being held on May 11th, 2021 via teleconference using Zoom with a YouTube livestream to the public. This is due to the COVID-19 emergency state and federal bans on large meetings or gatherings. And pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive order 202.1 issued on March 12th, 2020, suspending the open meetings law. No pledge, no flag. And now we got to do our quorum roll call. Supervisor Oberly here, Councilman Giuliano.
Here.
Councilman Witten.
Here.
Councilman Dean Michael.
Here.
Councilwoman Cunningham.
Yeah.
Town Clerk Mackin.
Here.
We have a quorum so we can conduct business. I make a motion to approve the meeting, the April 13th, 2021 town board meeting. Is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote, Oberly, I, Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 2021 special town board meeting, is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote, Oberly, I. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried, supervisors comments. On the Memorial Day holiday, the town offices, town court, clerks, and highway department will be closed on Saturday and Monday, May 29 and 31. The library will be closed only on Monday, 31, May 31, and open regular hours on Saturday, May 29. The recycling center will be open regular hours, that's 7:30 a.m. to noon on Saturday, May 29. This is a reminder that grievance day is Wednesday, May 26th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Zoom. Please have any grievance applications into the assessor's office before 8:00 p.m. on May 26. More information on the process can be found on the town's webpage, www.townofclinton.com. Forms are also available in the out-mail box on the porch of the town hall. Another reminder that the Fiddler's Bridge Road Bridge, near the intersection of Long Pond Road by West Clinton Station 2, will be closed to all traffic starting Tuesday, June 1st until mid-October 2021. Notify your attendees coming to social activities and delivery and service providers of the closure, and the detour routes will be published when they become available. I want to report that my secretary to the supervisor, Stephanie Tempano, by herself, after about four months of searching town records and many discussions with FEMA staff in Albany, has obtained approval for her grant request for $17,755 for COVID supplies purchased in 2020. Two more FEMA grant requests will be done in 2021 for Fred Siqueen's IT Zoom support and COVID supplies for 2021. This is replacement of the money that we expended, which we weren't sure we were gonna get. The town encourages its residents to sign up for the free electronic email service MailChimp, so they can quickly get information on activities and other information directly. No waiting for the newspaper to come mail to arrive, or having to search the internet or town's webpage for information. To quickly sign up, go to the town's webpage, again, www.townofclinton.com, and in the upper right side top line, click on subscribe and fill in the requested information. Information during the time of COVID-19, the information changes weekly and sometimes daily. This way, you'll be quickly informed of the COVID changes and other pertinent town information. That's all I have on that. Now, the next thing is is a CAC presentation. Is Myra, Maya, rather, on?
Helen, Ella. Gower Palanzuela. That's her name.
Oh, yeah, I just.
That is Maya signed on?
She was sent.
I, uh, no, she's not.
Shane, we'll do it next time, then. Or, you want to do it, Michael?
I am not prepared to do that presentation.
Good, go to your next agenda item, and let me see if I send her the invite now, whether she'll join.
I thought you did.
I made a mistake, I made an error, and I forgot. I'm sorry, I can send it right now.
Okay, well, we'll do our, do the next presentation, and we'll bounce back. Okay, this is on the proposed townwide revow, how to approve a lead person and to implement townwide revow. And at this point, the town assessor, Teresa Stegner, will just give you some background as to what it is. The important factor that we are bringing it up now is, first of all, the change in values, but that's one part. The other part is, if we're gonna expend monies to do something, we have to put it in the 2022 budget, which starts in August, and we've got to collect costs and whatever it takes, so it's two problems here. One is the change in assessment values, and the other one is putting it into the budget to do something. So, Teresa, give us an update of where we stand.
Hi, can you hear me?
No.
Raise your volume.
I don't, it's probably not my volume.
No.
No.
Get closer to it.
You think so?
Yeah, you're getting better.
Am I getting better?
Yeah, she is getting closer to her microphone.
I just gotta get closer to my microphone. Usually, I yell loud, and my husband yells at me. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so, since I was appointed the assessor in September of 2013, I came in, and we were at 101%. Since then, I have continued to do non-reappraisal reassessment projects to maintain 100%. In order to continue that, I feel the requirement of doing a full-blown reappraisal reassessment project, including full data collection of every parcel, and analysis of every different type of property class done by generally an outside company. Now, it could be done internally also, but I would need, I would need the resources, and as you know, this is my part-time job, so I wouldn't have the time to devote that perhaps the prior assessor Garth did, when he did it in-house. So, I have a concern with that, but I think Ray gave you an idea of how much it would probably cost for an outside company to do a womb-to-tomb reappraisal project, reassessment project, and it's probably in the neighborhood of $250,000 to $500,000. I was going to contact Garth, they're usually the highest, I didn't have a chance, I'm sorry, I've been extremely busy at both jobs. But anyway, so, my, I would say that if you put together an RFP, doesn't, I mean, I don't know how much, there are standard RFPs out there through the state taxation and finance, be tweaked a little bit to your needs, you could put that out just to get an idea of how much it would be. And as Ray said, you'd have to put it in the budget, and then in general, you'd probably do the data collection portion in 2022, and then have the revaluation at 100% for 2023. So, in other words, in 2022, we'd kind of let it slide for a year, and maybe that's the best year to do that, because I anticipate a 15% to 20% change in values across the board, and this is not just in the town of Clinton. We're seeing this in all of Dutchess County. So, what happened was, the first piece of COVID is in 2021's assessment rule, essentially. The, because the state uses sales from July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2020, to establish what the market value to assess value is. So, for next year, it'll be July 1st, 2020, to June 30th, 2021, when most of the COVID sales occurred. So, we're going to see a bigger jump in, I think, next year, so. You know, I hate to let it slide for a year, but this has been a lot of work to me. So, what I have to do is, I have to do a systematic analysis of the entire town, and that's generally done by looking at every property through a statistical analysis by property class. There's basically 100s is vacant, 200s is residential, I mean, I'm sorry, 100s is farm, 200s is residential, 300s is vacant, 400 is commercial, 500 is a community, anyway. So, there's different categories, and we each go in those categories, generally, there's other property classes that you can narrow it down. So, for the residential section, I look at 210s, single families, 220s, two families, 240s, which is residence with acreage. Anyway, so within each class of that, then there's narrowing it down more is your neighborhoods and your building styles. So, to get an idea of what the market is doing in each segment, rather than just say, okay, everybody, the market did fit, which is what the equalization rate does, essentially, is the market went 15% up, we're gonna raise everybody 15%. Now, that's not really how it works, and that's the benefit you get when you maintain 100%, and you do a revaluation, is you can change those segments of the market where you see them changing, where they're different from one year to the next. So, commercial might only, you know, change 2%, whereas residential changes 20%, and vacant goes down. So, if you don't have that 100%, you know, assessment to market value, you don't get the benefit of changing sectors of your properties. So, that's the benefit of staying at 100%. And the problem is, you'll quickly lose it. So, if, like I said, if I let it go, and by the way, I found out, I had a meeting yesterday with my Assessor's Association, Steve Hartnett, he's from the state. I didn't have to tell you that I was doing this, that I was perhaps not going to maintain 100%. I could have just let it go. I don't think that's right, because the town has to make the decision to do a revaluation, the town board does. I think I should be telling you that I'm going to not maintain 100%. So, that's kind of my plan. I said, it's a lot, I worked quite hard this year, many hours, not, this was something that was a little out of the ordinary last year too, but this year especially with, you know, the market's been going up the last couple of years, but this year and potentially next year are just crazy. And just, anyway.
Teresa, you and I had a conversation, and we came up with several other ideas.
Yep.
One of the ideas was, you wanted to find out if you could just do, say, the commercial properties, which you felt most, that it should be an outside firm more than just you internally. Did you have an opportunity to talk?
I talked to the state about that, so I cannot do, you cannot do that unless you do the non-reappraisal reassessment project for the rest of it. So, you could potentially do it just for that sector, and if I agreed to do the other analysis, you could do it that way. But, once again, I am really not.
Then part two of that.
Part two of that.
Part two of that was that, well, instead of hiring a firm at a cost of $250,000 plus, and for long-term planning, you and I had talked, it would probably be wise to maybe hire a deputy assessor,
So.
who could do most of the work internal for the fact that over the next couple of years, they could be solely doing that, but learning from you how to take over your position for the day that you don't no longer want to be the assessor.
This is, that would be great, so that's also would be.
Which would be.
Which would be right, that would really be a benefit in all kinds of ways.
It's a benefit in two ways, one is cost, and two is long-term planning.
Right, absolutely, so I totally agree with that. And the other thing you brought up was the, you could extend the revaluation over, say, a five-year period and collect 50,000, you know, let's say it was 250,000, you could save.
Our plan.
Do it in a fund for, you know, and then do the revow after five years, but that's gonna create inequities, that's a little tricky, the longer you go, I mean, five years isn't terrible, but I don't know if that's the best way to go, but it is a potential, you know.
I lean towards the hiring a deputy to kind of take this internal, and then have somebody to basically replace you at some point in time. You know, to me, that's better planning than a one-time payment to some outside firm.
Right, and we do need a data collector, so as part of that person's job, you know, I would teach them, I would teach them, that's everything, I would be happy to do that. I hope you can find someone, it's been tricky. This job's a little more involved than most people think, I just want to put that.
So, if we were able to find a deputy by January 1st, though, that's when we would do this next year. That's the plan?
You would have to budget for it, though, if you're going to do it in-house, I mean, you know, it would be much cheaper, as we pointed out.
So, so as a plan, and it's just a proposal, basically, what we would do is hire the outside firm to do the commercial, because that is a specialty in itself.
Yes.
And then internally, we could hire a deputy, so that we have that data collection on more of the residential properties.
That would be great.
My, oh, sorry, Dean.
What's your thoughts? I mean, you think that's the best course of action, or?
Well, I, you know, I definitely lean more that way. My concern was when Teresa was saying that, you know, okay, it could be 250,000, it could be 500,000. There's a big change in that number, and, you know, trying to come up with that in the budget, you know, because there's no grants or anything that we can get for that, correct, Teresa? On that?
No, there's not. There's a little bit of a rebate, you know, you get up to $5 a parcel after you do the.
After, yeah.
But it's not $5, it's up to $5, it's like $2.05, but.
Yeah, I think before, we were getting a dollar a parcel or something.
Yeah, yeah, it's very minimal, so it's not gonna help you much, but.
I kind of, I kind of like Dean's idea, whatever you guys worked up that way with the deputy, that sounds fair.
But I would encourage you to do an RFP, I mean, I would talk to the state, I could even talk to them, and just to get an idea of what it would, you know, it doesn't, I mean, it's gonna cost you some time, but to send an RFP out, you don't have to, Hyde Park does this all the time, I understand. Anyway, so, you could send out an RFP just to see what you get back and how much it does cost, give you an idea of how much it is per parcel, and how much you'll save doing it in-house.
Well, I mean, just taking $1,000 a parcel, like 2,500 parcels.
No, it's not a $1,000 a parcel, it's probably $130 a parcel.
Is it that low?
50.
Even with the commercial?
Yeah, because we don't have that much commercial.
Okay.
I don't know, I mean, there's, some things are commercial that, you know, churches are commercial, they're, you know, so if you look at every commercial part, I think we have 30-something, it's a very small percentage of our parcels. Most of our parcels are resident.
Well, that's what I meant, anyway, I was off the decimal, but, you know, what I was saying is, we're still coming in at the 250 to 300,000 range.
Yeah, yeah, true.
Would it speed up the process if we hired some students in the summer to actually go out and record dimensions and pictures and stuff, as we discussed?
Well, you could do that, I mean, any data collection that anyone can do, I'll be happy to train them, would be helpful, really. That's the time-consuming piece of this entire puzzle, is data collection, and then field review, which comes after the data collection, the analysis, to make sure you go out and say, okay, I valued it at this, this is seeing you drive past and go, yeah, that seems like the right number. So, those are the really time-consuming pieces, because sometimes you have to go to a property multiple times, depending on, you know, whether you can arrange for someone to be there to look at it, they want to be there. It's, yeah, that's the hard part.
Now, does the state or the county offer class like they did in the past to teach the people what to collect and how to collect it, and how to behave, or whatever?
I gotta be honest, I don't know the last time they did a data collection class, it's been a while, so I'd have to find out.
I don't, I wasn't to the class, but I knew it took a week.
Yeah.
For people.
Right. Actually, I took that class when I was first an assessor, I don't know, back in 2006, I guess.
Oh.
So, just so that we can mull it over, how many hours would you think you would need for a deputy to be able to complete this in a certain timeframe?
Oh, that's a good question. Oh, I'll have to do a little math in that, I think it's generally, you know, you want to, especially since they're new, probably gonna be an hour per parcel. Now, some of them are vacant, so it's, you won't really have to, but we have about 1,700, 1,800 residential parcels, so 1,800 hours to collect data on that. And then, they also need to understand how to take that and put it into, you know, draw it onto a card, you have to take a three-dimensional object and make it a two-dimensional object, and it would either, you know, by hand, most people, or use Apex, you know, so, we really want to go to a software package. So, yeah, there's a little training involved there, so, yeah, it would probably, I would say, you know, you're gonna need 2,000 hours. Probably.
That's over one year, correct?
Over a year, yeah.
Just doing some math here.
But it's hard to work in the winter.
Yeah, that's very true, too, it's hard to. Yeah, that's very true, too. It's hard to work in the winter. Although the winter has some benefits in that the leaves are off the trees. So really, it's best to sometimes data collect in the spring and fall.
Two thousand hours comes out to basically a full time job.
Yeah, basically.
Which still for one year would still.
Or would you need to do it in one year? Or could you do it over two? Because usually when you hire the, the firms, don't they usually take about two years?
Yes, they usually do. They usually do the data collection in one season, usually summer, or the spring, fall. But yes, you could do that for two weeks. There's definitely options.
Yeah. So if you split it up with, say, four students, just the college students or somebody, you know, wanting to earn a few bucks and get a resume stuff, you shrink the two thousand hours for one person, maybe to a thousand, and then the others split it up, because they don't want to be here in the summer.
Yeah, I mean, if you're splitting it up between, let's say, a deputy and then a couple of assistants or uh, interns, you know, that wouldn't necessarily be too bad. But I think in the long term planning, what we're doing is we're, we're, we're basically educating somebody to be the assessor um, in long term. By having just, you know, somebody that's here just for, you know, a few months in the summer and having to retrain over and over. I think that becomes a little too tedious and takes away from, you know, the evaluation process.
And the intent, the intent of having someone that's ready when Teresa's ready to say, ready to retire.
Tomorrow. This has been, this has been a challenging year. And just remember, raising your assessment does not mean we're raising your tax.
Right.
But everybody thinks that. So you can't change people's mind when it comes to that.
It's like a tide. It raises all boats at the same.
Exactly right. Yes, yes.
Okay, do we have any more questions that Teresa can answer or so? Just trying to figure out how we move ahead here now. Because do we want to wait until June to make a decision? We'd like to go one way versus another way? Is one of the people here willing to do an analysis and work with Teresa to come up with some numbers or some ideas and, you know, more detail? I'm just trying to get it started now so that we have time to put something in the budget if we're going to do something in the budget.
Well, we're going to have to do at least an RFP for the commercial properties.
Yeah.
To find out how much that's going to cost us.
And if you're doing the commercial, you may as well do the whole thing. You know what I mean? It's not that much more. You can just, just, just do them both, just so you know.
I don't know. Yeah, all I know is the last Gar thing was we had a low bid on the contract. But by the time we were done paying for the extras, like the Chinese menu, five dollars a picture, it became quite expensive.
I think we were paying Gar ten, I mean, Garth, ten thousand dollars extra to to bring up the assessment.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, we, we had it as a separate line item in his pay.
Yep.
Two years. And after the assessment was done, that line disappeared. So he went back to his normal salary. But in this case, if, say, we hired a deputy, the deputy would have their line and Teresa wouldn't have anything special. She may have a little bit, but it's pretty much already, you know, covered. So who wants to take the lead on trying to come up with a solution for the June meeting?
Sure, I will.
Okay, Dean, okay.
Since I was being forced into it, since Michael said it was either me or Chris anyway.
Thank you, Dean.
Okay, so we're just going to hold it open and come up in June. Try to make a decision as to what to do so we have a foundation for the budget. Just start, you know, collecting real numbers. We don't need the numbers until August, but, you know, hey, if you don't start now on this stuff, it gets hard to put it all together.
Yeah, but I, but I, I, I think the solution that Dean and Teresa has with the deputy, I think is going to solve a lot of issues across the board. I really think, you know, long term, it it's going to be cheaper, but it's also going to give someone that gets to learn our town and the workings of that. So there's a smooth transition. And it's always good to have in some, especially in that type of position, some sort of backup.
Well, also, when people see their, their assessment go up, like Teresa said, doesn't mean their taxes go up, but you see their assessment go up. They're going to be all flocking to the office. So she's going to be inundated with that as well.
Yes, absolutely have been.
Might have to put the, a mode around the uh, building over there.
No, just to drive through.
It's good that it's a locked door, so.
Okay, I I think we've wrapped this piece up. I thank you, Teresa, for your informative discussion.
Sure.
And Dean, we'll look forward to some sort of report or analysis or something at June so we can figure out where we're going.
Okay. I mean, if everybody feels comfortable with that, then let's send out an RFP and, and then also see what we can do in the search pool is what's out there. And then we're figuring two thousand hours, potentially over two years, but uh, maybe two thousand hours, one thousand for a deputy and then, uh, you know, maybe a couple of uh, interns from the college. So I'll reach out to the college and see if anybody, um, I don't even know what to think, but maybe someone more from a mathematical stance or.
Oh, architectural or engineering school, like Duchess, you know, they have curriculums of that nature. That could be most helpful. Okay, we'll pop back. Uh, is the, is my Maya available?
No, she's not. Go ahead, Michael.
I'm sorry, uh, no, uh, people, I'm sorry if I haven't looked like I'm paying attention. We've been sending messages back and forth. Uh, no one's been able to get in touch with Maya, so.
Okay.
So we're going to move on.
Okay.
I just want to say that Fred did notify her, so we, the email, so she was notified. He mentioned earlier that he didn't do that, but that was a mistake.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next item of business then is approve fee schedule, Dean.
So, um, hopefully everybody had an opportunity to look over some changes that we had made. Um, in addition to the fee schedule, I've been working with, um, our town attorney as far as potentially, you know, changing the violations. Um, because they hadn't been changed in a long time either, but also taking into consideration a separate violation line for the, um, um, the ag events, the conference centers and the, um, Airbnbs. Um, but that's another topic. So I don't know if anybody had a chance to look over the fee schedule, if you had any questions, you wanted to go over any of those things. So one of the changes, just to let you know, is that we're changing the way we, we actually bill for, um, a building permit. Um, we were doing it one way. Most of all the other towns were doing it in a different fashion. Uh, one would be, um, we were just doing it on a project cost, which is very, you know, could be skewed one way to the other, project to project versus just doing it on a square footage basis. So that was uh, one of the suggestions that we changed to kind of match what all the other towns were doing. But then all our other fees hadn't been changed in eight years, so, um, they were all kind of made, um, by the help of the, um, uh, the building zoning clerk, Arlene and our building inspector and zoning inspector, um, came up with some other towns and and tried to match what they are. Um, not a, not a huge change, um, still, if you're scanned down, the fees aren't all that, uh, you know, that high compared to other towns, but, um, we did increase them.
I, I, I just, I assume that we've already made a lot of comparisons with other towns. And I was just looking at the, um, the forty five hundred and the thousand. Um, and I'm assuming that that's competitive with other towns. That's, um, under, um, payments and卢as, uh, it's her recrea, the recreation land, recreational land. It's on page two.
On page two. You know what? I'm going to have to switch computers because this one's dying. My other one wouldn't start.
Um, I assume we've done this before.
Yeah, tho- those are actually numbers that haven't changed.
Okay. Okay, I had no previous knowledge, so I wasn't sure. Uh, that's the only one I I cut question whether we were going up, down, or whether it was staying the same and.
Switching computers only because, uh, I'm using my phone now. Um, so I'm going to disconnect from this one and then, uh, I'll switch to my other one here. Let's see here. Why am I, uh?
While Dean's doing that, I'll just bring up that the cemetery fees also changed to what we had discussed last month. We have no premiums for weekends and holidays. It's all just one flat fee, no matter what day of the week.
Yeah, I, I think it's important that we actually approve it tonight if at all possible, unless someone has strenuous objections, because we are getting mega million dollar home stuff going up and we're pricing them very cheap. And, uh, you know, while a boom is still on, let's recoup some more money to recover our costs in the departments.
I, I agree. I just wanted clarification on that. That's all.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Uh, Dean, you're off.
Your volume's off, Dean.
You're muted.
I think he's just, he's lost, he's getting back in.
Sorry. My unmuted now?
No, you're good.
Okay. Um, so, yeah, I mean, our fees haven't, uh, like I said, changed in eight years. So we were way below anybody else and we still didn't even raise them up to what other towns are are doing. So, I mean, I think these are fair. Um, you know, prices.
Thank you.
So if everybody's in in agreements, I make a motion, be resolved, the town board approves the following resolution of number twenty seven of twenty twenty one, the fee schedule dated May eleventh, twenty twenty one. Is there a second?
Giuliano second.
Further discussion? Roll call, vote Oberly, I Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
I.
Dean Michael.
I.
Witten.
I.
Motion carried. Okay, the next one is conference center, local law. That's essentially being.
Yeah, we're going to table that next one. Unless somebody else has any other comments that they want to add.
Are we gonna, are we gonna deal with the schedule of use regulations and zoning revision, I suppose?
Yeah, I don't want to have to go through public hearing on that as well and and change when we have all the rest of the, uh, scheduled use changes and everything else. But I'll, I'll talk to Shane and see what he thinks about that as well.
Why we're talking about that, should we try to get, you know, because I mean, that stuff, that's got to be taken care of, get back on the zoning revision. Wouldn't that, uh, be a good thing, try to start getting in person?
That's an item on the agenda.
Okay, all right, we'll go back.
Wait until then.
I didn't get that point.
Okay, next item is designated clean energy community by Witten.
So the Clean Energy Communities Program is run by NYSERDA, New York State Energy Research and Development Agency. Um, when it first began, there were what they called ten high impact actions. They've now upped that to thirteen different actions. Um, and if a municipality accomplishes four of those, they become a designated clean energy community. Um, we've done that, uh, just this past month. The R four were, we sent, um, we had, we did energy code enforcement training. We have a unified solar permit in place. Uh, we have a benchmarking program run by the CAC, which is tracking our energy use through our municipal buildings. And we're part of a community choice aggregation program. So over six hundred communities in New York are, uh, have enrolled in the Clean Energy Communities Program and just over, like, just over half, uh, have actually been designated. So this is something that we should be really proud of. I know I am. Uh, I've been working on it for the three and a half years I've been on the board. And it enables us to get, uh, automatically eligible for a five thousand dollar grant. And if we continue to accomplish any of the other high impact actions on their list, we gain points and can come, uh, become eligible for more grants. What's great is most of those actions are also involved in the cli- climate smart communities program, which we're also working on. So there, it's, it's like a double benefit. Um, so basically, I just, I just wanted to talk about how proud I am of what we've accomplished. And it's not me. It's, it's, um, definitely the CAC I need to thank. I want to thank Ray. He was the lead on the community choice aggregation. Um, the town board for going along with all of my schemes of benchmarking and unified solar permits and enforcement training over the years. Um, Carol, who has helped put together more paperwork than you can imagine that I had to keep submitting to get this designation. Um, and, uh, both everybody in the zoning and building department that have helped with, uh, solar laws and benchmarking and all those other things. So um, I just wanted to pat ourselves on the back and take a moment and say thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Michael. You did good work.
Thanks.
And the other thing I'd like to also compliment is Barbara Mansell, who's the chair of the CAC. She's devoted a lot of time in trying to coordinate all this stuff, because they got a lot of pieces over there that are going on.
Barbara is a treasure for our town. And I feel very lucky to be the liaison to the CAC, because I get to spend at least one meeting a month with her.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
The next one is rebidding.
That's you, Mike.
That's you, Mike Witten. Turn your mute off.
Yeah, sorry about that. Uh, so I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves the sale of highway and recreation surplus items with no minimum bids through absolute auctions as listed on attachment C.
Uh, Giuliano second.
Okay, any discussion?
I just wanted to clarify, these are things that we had put up for auction last month and didn't meet the minimum. Uh, and we've also added a trailer that was, uh, recreations to this month's auction.
And just to be clear with that, we, when, when they went to bid, they didn't have minimums on it at the auction house. Um, when we set the hour in our amendments on here, uh, because they were given as, uh, an estimated value per se on that. And we did pretty well last time on, uh, with everything else, with the exception of a couple pieces of equipment. So that's why we're putting them back out so that, you know, at this point, uh, the supervisor and superintendent have the, of highway has the option to, uh, amend or accept or reject, reject based on the bids.
Uh, I called the auction house the other day and asked them about no bids. First of all, they put one dollar bid if you put nothing. They've got to have a number to start with. I was questioning the fact that if you only put one dollar to start it and you buy, say, the lawnmower there and you get it for twenty dollars, you pick the thing up and take it to the junkyard and get two hundred dollars in scrap, we've lost a lot of money. And we're thinking, maybe we should put some value to try to recoup something. But, uh, you know.
It is in the resolution that we passed last July, though.
It was July.
That, or this past July, that you and, um, and Todd Martin can reject bids.
Uh, under, understand, but.
Okay.
This gets you a higher level up, is what I was saying. You don't get a twenty dollar bid when you might have gotten seventy five or a hundred. I'm just putting numbers randomly. That was all. But whatever you two guys want, I'll go with. But I just want to make a comment that we could be losing some maybe money.
Well, I mean, I, I know that metal prices are up from where they were, but where scrap metal was, was like pennies a pound. I mean, nothing, nothing significant that we would really even worry about. Um, and and having to take, I mean, for myself, when I take scrap metal to the junkyard, it usually costs me more in gas uh, that I'm taking the metal there than, than I'm actually getting from, from the metal. So I, I, I would rather have someone pick it up and take it for twenty dollars. I think I'm making more money that, that way.
All right, just a comment I had, whatever. We'll go with. Okay, ready for vote? Okay, make a, uh, roll call, vote Oberly, I Cunningham. Okay, make a roll call vote Oberly, I Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
I.
Michael.
Dean Michael or?
Yes.
I.
And Witten.
I.
Okay, motion carried. Michael, for the ZBA application fee.
That's you, Dean. Next item.
The ZBA application fee?
Yeah, right. You asked to have it on the agenda, number six.
Did I take number six off? I have a different number six here in front of me.
You want me to read it? And you can discuss it when you hear it. I make a motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town board approves the refund of two hundred dollar administration review fee to Kim and Keith Punchar for their June twenty seventh, two thousand and nineteen ZBA appeal.
Zero second.
I second it.
Okay. Now, which, which Michael's gonna talk to?
Dean.
Yes, I remember this now. I'm sorry. I was on page six of a different page, but I, this is a situation, we don't typically refund fees. The applicant is complaining that they never had met in person, so they feel like nothing was done. I was told that the, the members of the planning board had reviewed it and thought that it was too similar to the last application, so they didn't move on it. So either way, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it. I think in the long run, if they didn't do a lot of work, we could just refund it.
Any more discussion? Ready to vote? Oberly, I Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
I.
Michael, this is Dean.
Yes, I.
Witten.
I.
Okay, motion carried.
I have a lot to say tonight. Uh, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, Governor Cuomo signed legislation granting public and private employees paid leave in order to get a COVID nineteen vaccine. The new law, which went into effect immediately, gives employees up to four hours of paid leave per injection. Along those lines, I make a motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the town board approves authorizing sick leave reimbursement for the actual time off up to four hours per injection for the highway employees who received COVID nineteen vaccinations during the workday before March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Zero second.
Giuliano second.
Any further discussion?
So now we're reimbursing people from the past?
So there are highway employees that went and got the COVID vaccine because they thought it was the right thing to do before that legislation was signed. And then other employees went and got the COVID vaccine because it was the right thing to do after the legislation was signed. And so there were some employees that got reimbursed for that time and others who didn't. And we just thought in the interest of being fair to all of our employees, we would retroactively credit the ones that went and got it before that legislation was signed.
Okay.
I was originally against going back, I think on the last meeting when we spoke about this, when it came up, but sitting, I mean, we only had a few people at that point and we got a smaller crew.
Three people.
Yeah.
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 And they're, they're just going to be reimbursed for their sick time that they took off.
Yeah.
Okay, done with discussion. Roll call vote Oberly, I Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
I.
Dean.
I.
Witten.
I.
Motion carried. Zoning Review Committee meetings.
Well, we discussed starting up again, but my concern is that typically there's three people that come to the meetings and it's, it's usually Russ Tompkins, Ian and, and Jeff Newman. And, and I know that Russ is not really up on technology, so my thought was not to resume until we can do them live. Now, if we want to do them, okay, we want to start maybe one day a month, you know, because we were one day a month, then we were two days a month. You know, so we've, we've flexed back and forth, but I want to give everybody an opportunity and three people are typically the ones that come to the meetings and put the most time into it. I want to make sure that they have ample opportunities to voice their opinions.
I mean, as of now, and we can have what, not, not counting us, what, eighteen? Is that correct?
Yeah.
And I thought I was in one of your emails, Ray, that I seen come through today, I think it was today, regarding that those numbers are going to start changing a little bit over the next month or so. Is that correct?
Yeah, they keep changing all the time.
But, but as, as of now, so I, I mean, it's not like we get a huge turnout on there. I would, you know, start planning, you know, maybe within a month or so, you know, getting back on track and moving forward. Because I mean, we got to start, we got to, I, we got to start getting some of this stuff done. I mean, you know, we sat on it for, for a year, we understand. Yeah.
I would say you, you mentioned getting, you know, the three people and if they had any opinions, I know that, I don't want to speak for him, but I spoke to Ian about this and he agreed that the zoning revision meetings work better when we do it live, that, because it's a more conversational thing and everybody's got the documents in front of them. So he would prefer, I believe, that we, when we can do it safely live, that's when he would like to start them.
And I, again, like I said, Russ, I know is not big on technology, so I, I know that he wants to do it live, so that's what I was really trying to accommodate. I, I thought, I thought Ian for sure would want to do it over, over the internet, but so I'm surprised to hear that. But yeah, I, I do find it, you know, this is, this is easy. I mean, you can do it from anywhere. And I know that Ian travels a lot, so you know, I, that's why I thought maybe he would like that better, but I, I just think we should do it live. If, if the three major people are, are most accommodated that way, that's the way we should do it. And like I said, we could just start off like one day a month and, you know, whenever we want to start and, you know, just get it going.
I, I also agree that it should be live because the synergism you get by the participants sometimes comes out with solutions that would take forever if we did it on Zoom. Okay, and it's proven time and time again. So I think waiting till it's, we can do it live to get that kind of participation would be the wisest thing.
The, the limiting factor that we have is a six-foot distance there. That's where we come with eighteen. Once that gets removed, we're, we're okay, or gets shrunk to three.
Well, again, the big topics have been.
People in the room is way beyond what we could put in that room if we wanted to. So it's not a people number, it's a distance number that's dictated. That's all.
Yeah, they're still keeping the social distance aspect, but you know, we've never really had more than three or four or five at most. Certain laws that we had, like the Ag events and the Airbnb that did drive in a lot more people because it affected more people. But for the most part, when you're talking about campsites, people are coming per se.
I, I have no objections on doing it. I'm just saying that the limitation is really on six feet. We typically only get three, maybe five, you know, and eighteen spaces are available, so we can still do it.
Yep.
Do we want to set a, set a date to start it? Get a date to a potential day while we're talking about this?
What were we doing? First and Third Thursdays? Is that what it was originally?
I think so.
First and Third Thursday, yes, because the Fourth Thursday is the, the zone.
Zoning room, yeah.
So what do you, what are you trying to propose, Dean?
Well, I would propose that we start maybe just doing, let's say, the Third Thursday, just to get it going. So we could start it next week if you want. I mean, I, I think we have to give notice, right? So maybe we just start it next month.
In June.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll start again, Third Thursday in June and see how it goes.
What time? Seven, six thirty?
Oh, six thirty is fine by me.
Live.
Live.
So you proposed, if you proposed the Third Thursday, is that with audience participation limited?
Yes. Well, it's got to be limited, but again, you know, if it becomes down to that the audience is full, then, you know, maybe we'll have a, a waiting area outside where people can take turns coming in to speak. If they have to speak about a certain topic or whatever. Typically, again, you know, nobody really comes. Unless it's a topic, they usually speak and then they leave if there's something, you know, pressing.
Okay, we'll bolster that on consensus. Okay, everybody?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, approve the pollinator pathway, Witten.
So I was really hoping there would be a presentation so you all knew what this was. The CAC, the CAC is working on a, on a program. It, it's something called the Pollinator Pathway. It's all throughout the Northeast. So I'm going to give my best overview where they're encouraging people to, especially in the spring, like not mow their lawns in the month of May, which is, makes my lawn ugly, but I, I have a much easier month of May right now. And, and planting pollinator gardens and it helps bees and helps birds, it helps butterflies. All of these are populations that have been plummeting over the last few years. And so I'm going to get the numbers wrong, but say a bee can travel up to five hundred feet before it needs to stop at, at another flower to pollinate. They're trying to create people who, and towns that register themselves to create, to plant pollinator gardens so that these insects have a whole pathway throughout our area to travel where they would always be fed, basically. And so I had come up with the idea, and I think I had sent it in an email, that maybe the CAC and the Friendship Garden Club can get together and plant a pollinator garden on the old Masonic Hall lot, which we've not been doing anything with. Of course, we are now going to do something with that lot tonight. But I would still like to pass the resolution just to approve it so that maybe later in the summer, or they can start planning right now and, and do this again next year, because this is a yearly thing. And I just wanted to sort of officially give them permission to garden there so that if anybody comes up to them and says, hey, what are you doing here? They'd have something to fall back on.
I would make a suggestion in your motion before you even propose it. Instead of limiting only to the Masonic Hall property, say town property, they may want to put something at Friends Park around the flagpole.
Well, well, certainly, they, they have been talking with Dan Harkenrider about doing things at, at both of the parks.
Yeah, there or out here on the baseball field area or the nature trail. I don't know, but this way, leave it open and, you know, you guys pick from a committee standpoint, what area you prefer to use because you may improve from year to year.
Okay, my, my only question with this would be, and I guess maybe because we didn't see the presentation on it. I understand the need for pollination. With like areas in like areas like by the baseball field or anywhere else, this would in, in potentially, we'll say potentially, because we're, you know, until we see what it does, encourage more bees around and anyone that might be allergic to bees or on certain areas with that. Do you know any information regarding that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm finding out more as we go through this too. I've seen a couple of presentations on it. It's funny, there's, there's something in our area in the Northeast, there's something like twenty-eight different species of bees and only two of them are the stinging kind, you know, like I, I assume it would, and I would assume that they're not going to plant these gardens along like the fences of the baseball field. But you know, maybe there's that little garden between the schoolhouse and the Masonic Hall, they can plant there, out maybe out on the lawn of the town hall, like, like Ray said, or, or if they can plant a, a pollinator garden out near the nature trail, you know, things like that. I think we could make it so that, discuss with them so that they're aware, let's not bring these around kids.
That's my concern.
Yeah.
I was going to say, why don't we do it on the five-acre parcel where our, our, our geothermal wells are? Because that property is not used at all. We don't have to worry about kids. We don't have to worry about anything because it's really an unused parcel as well. And, and this way it doesn't interfere with anything. I mean, only for the fact that now they're going to use that parcel and, and and they're going to probably use it all summer, so there's not going to be any planting season for that parcel.
Yeah, and I was gonna pass the resolution just to give them permission for the future as well, you know, because I knew this summer might be shot for them there. But if we want to say located on town property, I'm happy to do that.
I have a, a big concern without defining it more about using the park and any kind of the park. Because every year we've got somebody rushed to the hospital because they got bitten by a bee and they're allergic, et cetera. So where you have a lot of public activities, I would be a little concerned without talking about it tomorrow, so.
Yeah, I don't think they would ever plant anything in a park without talking to Dan Harkenrider. I know Maya's been the one leading on that and she's had plenty of conversations with Dan. I think right now they're discussing, and don't hold me to this, but I think they're discussing like on the far side of the pond at, at Fran Mark, so none of the summer camp kids really go over there.
Was it like flowers and stuff like that?
Yeah, it really is. I mean,
So it kind of gives a little bit.
I've been trying to learn, so I'm doing it myself, you know, um, you know, there's all sorts of different plants and flowers that you, that are encouraging to pollinators. Sunflowers. You know, nasturtium, all sorts of things, milkweed, those kinds of things for butterflies. And it gives them a habitat where they can feed themselves, feed babies and, and increase the population, which is declining at scary rates right now.
Well, that's because of the bacteria, parasite that's been killing them.
Yeah. Oh, and, and I'm getting a text message to mention native plants as well. Native plants, native plants, non-invasive. See, I'm not the messenger for this. I just passed the resolutions.
So I would say that they could use it on town property with the prior authority approval. So if it's the wrecked park, it should be with Dan. If it's the town property, it should be with the supervisor and just do it that way.
Okay. All right, so I make a motion, be it resolved that the town board approves the Pollinator Pathway project organized by the CAC with the assistance of the Friendship Garden Club to create habitats that are friendly to pollinators located on town property with prior department approval.
Further discussion? Okay, let's vote. Oberly, I Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
I.
Dean.
I.
Witten.
I.
Motion carried. Okay, the next one's on the computer security policy. I'm, I'm working with our IT person, Fred Secuina, to develop the town's computer policy. We received a generic policy from NYmer to use as a starting point and it strongly urges us to require our employees to change their passwords monthly on their computers. This is a very effective way to reduce fraud, scams and hacking. With this approval, Fred and I can finish writing this portion of the policy. So that's the general background. There, there's some other pieces of it, but if I can't get agreement on this, then I got to figure out how we're going to solve it the other, and, and in any other way. So that was the purpose of that. And then there's a motion here that we agree to use the monthly change of passwords. So is anybody having any discussion, comments or something before we move on to the motion?
I mean, I, 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 most of the companies that I have typically do ninety days. I mean, so I don't know how Burdenson, the passwords, you know, problem would be to go monthly. I also have an issue because it usually dictates how many characters. And you can't use like the last ten passwords again, so so my question would be, is it going to be tooners to have it monthly, number one? And number two, what, what would be the policy as to the number of characters and how many times you could use that password in a, you know, once in ten, once in twenty?
Typically, what Fred has said that Typically what Fred has said that it's being done in Millbrook, okay, already. They do it monthly and other places at IBM, it was monthly when I was there and that's years ago. And what people have done is essentially picked a word, uh, numbers, special characters that meet the criteria and they change just one or two things every month in that thing. So and they repeat it after about a year or a year and a half worth, you know, so you can go and you, you had 21. Now you make it 23 and 28 or 48, you know, and just all the rest of it stays the same.
I, I understand all that and, and I work in a very regulated field and I'm both regulated by, you know, the financial industry as well as the insurance industry. And so we're only doing 90 days. And you know, their requirements are simple, one upper character, one lower character and at least one number and one ampersand. And then it usually has to be at least seven to 14 characters. I understand all that. I just wanted to know what, what you were thinking about as far as a policy. And if nine, if 30 days was maybe too short and maybe 90 days would be easier.
With, with all the problems coming up with scams and frauds and hacking. You, you gotta keep, you gotta change them. Okay, some have not been changed in years in the town. Okay. So we, we gotta go through somehow. And I think 30 days is what is recommended by the insurance company. And we do have insurance right now that covers it for ransomware and all that kind of stuff. And they may come out as part of the condition to be in the plan. To require monthly changes. They got, they haven't required it yet, but it's getting that way. In fact, AXA Insurance Company used to have insurance plans for ransomware. They stopped paying ransoms. Don't pay it to fix your system, but they won't pay you the money to get you out of the ransom.
No, that's why they want you to have your, your systems backed up.
So why don't we, you know, right now they're not mandating it to 30 days. Why don't we go somewhere in the middle at 60? And if it changes and they mandate it, then we can always change it. I mean.
Yeah, I, I, that's why I wanted to have this discussion before we went through writing this whole thing and then found out, oh, we gotta change everything.
I mean, there's also, there's also programs where, you know, on, on my computer, I have a different password for every website I visit. And I have no idea what those passwords are. It's just, it's something that's automatically generated by my computer and I only need one password.
Yes.
So that.
System, yeah.
Yeah, and, and it always just automatically does them for me.
We can do that here, but it essentially costs money per computer, per person. And you know, it's extra money to the budget. And it's, and you buy a year subscription. Just like you have for yourself and you know, it's probably $25 or $50. I'm just guessing and I don't have anything at my fingertips. But you know, this way by having the people change it, we don't incur that cost. I mean, not that we can't pay it if it's necessary because one hit. It'll wipe you out.
Red, do you want me to add anything to this?
If you want, yeah.
What the town of Washington did, they, they, they wanted to immediately after the ransomware incident over there, they wanted to follow NYmer's insurance recommendations as, as close to the letter as possible. So they said, let's change passwords once a month. It was difficult for staff for I'd say about 90 days before each one of the staff members had worked out a little system on how they change their passwords. No one ever calls me to help with password resets. They did for the first 60 to 90 days and then all those calls disappeared. And then I talked to the employees at, and staff at the town of Washington and I asked each one of them how they were recording their passwords and almost all of them were maintaining a piece of paper that they kept locked in their desk drawer. And they would just put the password. And then the way I set up the system over there and it's variable and we can change, there's a lot of things that we can change. Is that we would allow passwords to be reused after one year. And then with the complexity requirements, we want a minimum of eight characters. And we just use Microsoft's definition of a, of a complex password, which is basically meets what Dean had said. Where it's a certain number of minimum characters, upper and lowercase letters, a number and some special character. And that usually meets. And once the staff figure out how to create a password that will pass muster with the system because they'll get to keep trying on their PC until it takes and it says your password was reset. At that moment, they know that that particular combination works and they start imagining what's my next combination could be. And it, and over a short period of time, it becomes a, a kind of a non-issue. And it greatly increases your security because I, I as the person with the administrator passwords everywhere will immediately change that every 30 days like clockwork. And what you gain from that is that a hacker that brute forces or steals a password and thinks they have a way into your system. They don't know this, but they only have an exact 30 day window to accomplish anything before they're going to get locked out by the password change. And that, that giving them no more than 30 days to cause trouble really limits the problems that you might have. That's it.
What do we, what do we?
You know, along with what Chris said, I think 60 days would be fine. But you know, I'm just encouraging the more protective because I'm the IT.
I'm just looking out for the employees, but you know, that's, either way, he's fine by me. I'm just saying that, you know, I work for, I, I mean, I, I represent Fortune 100 companies and, and all of them are at 90 days right now. So, and, and, and actually one of them, uh, which happened to be Liberty Mutual, um, went to a 21 character password. But now they, now they give me six months.
That's a very complex password, very hard to break.
That's a lot to remember.
26 characters takes about 30 days to break into.
Right.
Would take me about 30 days to get on my computer too with.
Dean, do you sell NYmer insurance to customers?
No.
Okay.
So. You got a choice. Pick a number.
Oh, I'm fine with whatever you do, but you know, that's, you know, I was just bringing it up as a.
Yeah, I think.
If, if, if NYmer's suggesting 30 days, try 30 days, go.
They're suggesting 30 days, but I think what, they're, they're just saying change your passwords regularly. We recommend 30 days and then they don't say much more.
Yeah.
So they're leaving it, 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 you guys, you guys can pick what you think is most appropriate.
Yeah, I don't want to, you know, not take their advice and then have them turn around and use it against us. So if they're suggesting 30 days, I would do 30 days.
I am on board with that.
Okay, thank you, Fred. I make a motion and to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves the monthly change of log on computer passwords for town owned electronic devices, including but not limited to computers, laptop, tablets and audio visual equipment. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
Okay, further discussion? Roll call Oberly, I Cunningham. Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next one is there's a 2020 New York State Building and Energy Codes that we gotta adopt. Or we're going to be in big trouble with the state. They come out every year, every two years. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves of adopting the latest New York State Uniform Building Code update and New York State Energy Code update dated May 12th, 2020. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
Any discussion? Okay, a roll call Oberly, I Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next one is our. Tending.
You, you muted yourself somehow, Ray.
I think he's leaning on the spacebar, which will mute you immediately if you're unmuted. He's, he's hitting the spacebar. He's still muted.
There you go.
There you go, wait. No, we couldn't hear you, Ray.
He's going for training many times. It's local in Poughkeepsie and all this time now it's out in Syracuse. So I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves municipal code enforcement inspector John Fenton attending the New York State AFC Codes Training in Syracuse, New York, July 14, 15, 2021 at a cost not to exceed $750 plus travel at 56 cents a mile. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Oberly, I Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael, Dean.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. The next one's for the building inspector, it's the same situation, different numbers. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves building inspector Mike Cosenza attending the New York State AFC Codes Training in Syracuse, July 14 and 15, 2021 at a cost not to exceed $750. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, this is a fire code training.
It's both.
Right. I mean, is, is he getting some of the cost picked up by Pleasant Valley?
His fire department's picking up some of the costs to transportation and the extra days that he'd have to stay. Roll call vote Oberly, I Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael, with, Dean. And Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next one is a renewal of firewall security. This is a three year renewal. It's cheaper and we don't have to keep reminding ourselves to do it yearly. I make a mo, oops, wrong line. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves the three year renewal of firewall security software with CB technology for $850. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
Further discussion? Roll call Oberly, I Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Mike Dean.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, the next one is a cool, Color Russo is using, wants to use the vacant land for the town where the Masonic Lodge used to be in Schultzville as a storage area. So that they could park their equipment there while they're rebuilding the bridge. They're also talking about the firehouse. They need pieces of equipment on both sides of the bridge because the bridge is disappearing, so they can't drive across it or anything. I worked with them and with our attorney on a agreement with them, they're in agreement with it. I, they're going to send it back and all. But that's the property, it has no property address, you know, such and such a street, but that's okay. So I make a motion to approve the following, following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves the agreement between a Color Russo and Son Incorporated in Tonic Clinton to use the old Masonic vacant, Masonic Hall vacant property parcel number 6468-00-410472 as a contractor's storage area from May 1st to December 31st, 2021 for equipment for the duration of the Fiddler's Bridge road bridge replacement for a fee of $500. And authorizes and empowers and directs the supervisor to sign the contract. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
Any further discussion?
So, so that $500 is just a one-shot $500 for the storage?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call Oberly, I Cunningham. Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next one is 284 agreement.
Sorry, I'm muted. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves resolution number of 2021, the agreement to spend highway funds.
Is there a second?
Giuliano second on that.
Further discussion? Okay, roll call Oberly, I Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. The next one is the approval of the CCA agreement, which we worked a long time to get a lot of provisions cleaned up in it. It's a 47 page document. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves the electricity supply agreement dated 4/28/21 between the supplier Jewel Assets Incorporated in Tonic Clinton and authorizes and empowers and directs the supervisor to sign the contract. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Oberly, I Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Michael, I mean Dean.
You could just say Michael. I'm, I'm assuming that's what it is.
Okay, and then last one is Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. Now we go into resignations and appointments. First one is Giuliano.
Yep. All right, so we're making a, a change from the highway clerk to Secretary of Highway Superintendent. I did change that on, on our sheet. We showed clerk of the highway superintendent, secretary of highway superintendent. Uh, so I make a motion to approve the creation of the position secretary to the highway superintendent effective May 10th, 2021.
Witten second.
Okay, further discussion? Roll call vote Oberly, May Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, uh, the next one is to make, I make a motion to accept the resignation of Melissa Karchmer from the position of clerk of highway effective May 8th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Witten second.
Further discussion? Roll call vote Oberly, I Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay.
Now, at this time, Carol Macken is going to relay the comments from the highway superintendent Martin.
So highway superintendent Martin emailed me and asked me on his behalf to appoint Melissa Karchmer to the position of secretary to the highway superintendent effective Monday, May 10th, 2021.
Okay, thank you. The next one is Giuliano.
Yeah, so I make a motion to approve that Melissa Karchmer, secretary to the highway superintendent be paid for 22 hours per week at 1836 per hour effective May 10th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
Any discussion?
And I just want to be clear that this position is the same hours and same pay as what her other position was. So there's, it's, it's kind of a lateral horizontal move.
Roll call vote Oberly, May Cunningham.
Hi.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. The next one is self-explanatory. I make a motion to approve the leave of absence. I make a motion to approve the leave of absence of Samantha Campbell. From the position of clerk from May twenty ninth to September seventh, twenty twenty one. She has been appointed head lifeguard for forty hours per week for summer and will return to the clerk position at that time. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call Oberly, I Giuliano.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Carried. Approval of warrants.
Make a motion, be it resolved, the town board approves the May eleventh, twenty twenty one general fund warrant, voucher number one seventy five through two thirty five. Totaling fifty nine thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and eighty five cents. And the May eleventh, twenty twenty one highway fund warrant vouchers number ninety three through one eleven. Totaling fifty six thousand six hundred and fifty two dollars and fifty six cents. Is there a second?
Giuliano second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Oberly, I Giuliano.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to move funds. I make a motion to move the following. Re- to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves the resolution of twenty twenty one. A resolution to move funds at the May eleventh, twenty twenty one meeting. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
Further discussion? Roll call Oberly, I Giuliano.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now we approve lots of the past top uh. Uh, temporary or. Injury reports for supervisor. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves the final res supervisors' reports for December twenty twenty. And January through April, twenty twenty one. Is there a second?
Dean Michael second.
Uh. Any discussion? Roll call Oberly, I Giuliano.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Carried. Any other items before the board?
Yeah, I just wanna bring up again the um, the email that I sent out for violations and I wanna bring up another thing that happened in the uh. Applying board. So as you can see, um. I forward to everybody because not everybody was included in the original email. Um. A suggested resolution um that Shane had worked on as far as some fees. And the idea would be that um. Um, that the the first fine uh would be um set at a thousand dollars and then move up from there and then. Um, each month, um, it would be or each week it would be calculated at another uh fine, but um. I wanna assure people in the town that, you know, we're we're not looking for a. Make it have enough teeth where there have been some incidents in the town where. People who. Couldn't absorb the fee, kept on violating the law. Because they were making much more than what the uh the fine was said. And so it was a cost of doing business. And so um, looking at um the generation of what some of these events can actually produce. Um, I wanted to make sure that we had a fee that was. Somewhat stiff, but at the same time, that something that would kill somebody. So I didn't know if anybody had the chance to look at it, if they had any comments.
I'm fine with it.
Uh, it's just a comment that uh you were talking about fines, not fees.
Right, fine, sorry.
I I wanna be very clear on that. The other thing is. You gotta, thi- this is a local law change, so we gotta the whole ritual of a local law thing, you gotta write it up and. Put it all together so we can public hearing and do everything else with it.
Well, that's why the draft was made and and circulated to all you to to see if you're okay with it, then we'll 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 proceed next month with that.
I'll admit, I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but I agree with the with the the spirit behind it, so I'll I'll look through it before the next meeting. Certainly read it.
Then another thing came up at the um, the um. The last planning board meeting. Um, there was two applications for um. Airbnb and one happened to be a property. Where the owner. It seems like has no intent in living in the property and is renting out both. The main house and then created a an apartment in a shed. That twenty years ago had some type of a special use, um but hadn't been renewed, so technically it's illegal, but. You know, so we have situations where. Did we really wanna allow for multiple buildings on a property to be used? Um. You know, so you kinda should think about some of that.
Well, that's what I think, if I remember right, included in the current law.
Well, some of some of the laws, a little gray, um, when it comes to um, is that considered two applications or one application? Um, so the planning board had some question about that as well.
I mean, the the my my thinking on this, and I I was also talking to Arlene about that um. The other day. Is is the um, question is one to have two independent homes or two apart or an a extra apartment on the property has to meet the current zoning. Uh, laws allowed and regulations. So I mean, if there's two houses on the property, two separate distinct places that have to meet the minimum. Uh, if there's AR three would be, you know, each part would have to have six acres for two or, I mean, that's my mindset or AR five.
Well, that's what the accessory dwelling requirements are.
Exactly. Because that's basically what it is. It's becoming the main house and accessory dwelling as a rental. I my mindset is it'd be two separate applications for review on that. Plus you've got two safety uh inspections that would have to be done. I mean, that this is inherently gonna become pro- uh uh possible. You know, when with bigger pieces of property where people that currently, you know, have that running multiple out of one house. Definitely gotta address it.
And there's. I I mentioned it for us to think about and and you know, I know that Michael had worked on the law. Um, so you know, I was looking for your input, Michael, as to, you know.
Yeah, I just.
Had you thought about that and and what should we do?
Uh, yeah, I just. This is a a new information to me, so I'm sort of processing it as you're talking. Um. Uh, uh, well, first of all, uh, the shed isn't a um. Is it considered a dwelling right now? So if it's not considered a dwelling, I wouldn't think that anybody could rent it out as a short term rental.
Well, there's multiple problems with this particular property and I don't wanna go into all the details, but. But apparently at one point in time, um, the original property owner, because this property sold two years ago. But the original property owner, like ten, twenty years ago, had a special use for their parents to live in that in that. That shed garage per se. Um, and and so like it's half garage and then half was converted into a like an apartment. Um, but when the person bought the property, from all the things that I saw, that that particular property wasn't even advertised as having that apartment. So. Uh, I again, I don't wanna go too deep in 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 particular for one particular property, but talk in in general. As to how to deal with these type of situations.
I mean, my thought would follow, I I think Chris is, um, you know. If you need to get a separate permit and separate approval to have an accessory dwelling, then you should get a separate permit for the uh Airbnb.
Right, because the law's not clear with that. So you know, the planning board, we should update it to make it more clear.
Okay. Jeff raised his, Jeff raised his hand if we're interested.
I I I realize it it's not open to public comment, but I I there is one part of the law that might address that. I I just, I just pulled it up quick and it's it's um. Uh, letter D um, three. Um. Non-hosted, short-term rental special use permits are limited to two per legal owners regardless of the number of properties owned. Um, so that applies to non-hosted only. Uh, so that creates a limitation um for somebody who's trying to do um multiple.
And would show that they need to get two separate permits. Because they're limited to two, which would show that they need to get separate permits for each one they're running. In my opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah, but 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 does that mean that they can't hold more than two?
Yes, that does mean that.
Right, so somebody couldn't buy up four properties and turn them all into short term rentals.
That was precisely what we were trying to avoid is large companies coming in and buying multiple properties and basically running a a spread out hotel.
Does does that help with what the planning board was?
Question. No, because it's still not clear as to whether it's two applications or one. I'm just saying that we should may need to modify it to say that each each. Rental unit needs to have its own.
Each dwelling.
Application, each dwelling unit.
Yeah, I I sort of agree, each one should have it because. Uh, each one has to have a fire inspection, a building inspection, et cetera, et cetera. We don't inspect just the one building and assume the other one's good, so I I think that's true. And. You might find other comments. From the planning board relevant to this so that we can incorporate them all in one shot rather than doing uh. Three or four zoning amendments to this law, um, you know, over the next two, three months. As we start really learning about it.
Yeah, I'll I'll bring it up next month to the planning board if they have any other uh, you know, additional comments as to some changes. Um, one of the other comments um from the discussion from last week's uh planning board was that. There hasn't been a lot of applications, so we do need to maybe uh send out a mailing.
Yeah, and. Currently, John Fenton has um. Sample letters that were sent to him and we've all looked it over and we're supposed to have a Zoom meeting whenever he can schedule it. Uh, to go over those sample letters so we can start mailing those out.
Okay.
Uh, unknown sample letters. Have you had the attorney take a peek at them?
Uh, I, it was definitely something that was in an email, so I I'll send them to Shane. I don't know that John has, so I'll send them to Shane.
I I just, you know, there may be some quirky word in there that could cause us grief.
Yeah, I was kinda waiting to see the final letter that he wanted to send, not the sample.
Hello.
You know, and then send that to.
That's good, that's good. I didn't realize what stage we were.
Yeah, I haven't seen a final letter of ours. I've just seen the samples that we're gonna base ours off of, so.
Okay. Okay, we done? Okay, I make a motion that the town board adjourns the meeting. Is there a second? Roll call Oberly, I Giuliano.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Motion carried. Meeting is adjourned. See you next month.